We're rolling.
We'll have to wait four minutes.
Oh, okay.
So we'll call this meeting to order. We'll call everyone is here tonight except for Marina. And she had a definite problem with sound, like an understanding. If we could all stand through the pledge of allegiance and it's right behind you down under the years of the flag and there's also a flag over here to the right.
Let's do allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to read the mission statement for the school district. The Barocca area school district provides quality education for all students that inspires continuous learning, positive relationships, curiosity and compassion in an environment that welcomes diversity while developing respectful and responsible citizens. At this time spotlight on education, Mr. Hardy. Do you want to stand up? Could you introduce everyone for us today?
They're all gonna talk, they'll introduce themselves.
Okay, fantastic.
That was Mr. Hardy.
Hi, I'm Dalton Hardy, your Barocca FFA president. I'll be talking about the national and state FFA. There are over 700,000 FFA members in the U.S. with over 8,000 chapters. Also, it goes, there's chapters in all 50 states plus Puerto Rico and the Virgin Islands. Our national FFA president this year is Colson McCoy. The National FFA Organization started in 1928 and the Barocca FFA was signed into the Barocca FFA in 1930. And we actually have the charter for it.
It's a corner.
We're turning around for it. We have the charter for it and that was signed by the first national FFA president, Leslie Applegate. So, that's pretty cool. And we were signed in 1930 on February 25th. So tomorrow will be our 90th anniversary.
Congratulations.
So, that's pretty cool. In the state of Wisconsin, there are over 20,000 members and 250 chapters. The state president this year is Colin Woltine. We are in section three of 10 sections with our chapter number being 0256. Our section three state officer is Curtis Woltine, and two are brothers and they're both relative. So, our section three is on here. Next, we're gonna have Landon Lucy talk about National FFA Week.
Thank you.
My name is Landon Lucy, I am the Barocca FFA vice president. I'll be talking about our National FFA Week celebration. This year we will celebrate it on the, on March 27th, on March 23rd through 27th. We start off the week with a bags tournament that runs all week. Throughout the week, we have different dress-up days. Monday usually is jam day and Thursday is car day to go along with bear and tractor school day. This year we will drive, we will drive our tractors to Gazzas for lunch, for pizza, and it'll be paid for by our organic dairy. The biggest day of the week is Friday because that is when we will have the FFA carnival. We will have events going on like food eating contests, time challenges, old school tug-of-war, and the final match of the bags tournament. I look forward to another great FFA week. Next, we'll have Erin Torgerson talk about fundraising.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Erin Torgerson, the Barocca FFA treasurer, and today I'll be talking about fundraising. We fundraise by mostly the annual fruit sale and the tractor raffle and every year we do a pancake breakfast. The Barocca FFA alumni helps with a lot of fundraising and there's over 100 people in the alumni. We did the tractor raffle this year and this spring we'll be having the pancake breakfast at Phil and Sarah Dudgeon's on March 21st and I hope you all come out. And now, Kami Lear.
So could you send out to the, to the board and to the district when the pancake breakfast is so that everybody is aware of the date and time? That would be very much appreciated.
That was beautiful.
It's right around the corner.
Hi, my name is Kami Lear and I am the Barocca FFA reporter. Today I will be talking about events throughout the year. We start off the year with fair showings at the Barocca County Fair. We follow this with the national convention, which most, all of our officers go to and then adding people, mostly seniors. We also do judging, state convention and Platteville judging. We have our annual fruit sale throughout the year, mostly during the fall/winter months. The fall/winter is usually the most busy time of year since most people have stuff, not much left doing in the field. In the early spring, we have farm safety where we teach kids how to stay safe from farms in case anything happens. We have our senior trip in the winter and we have our spring trip, spring. And then to end off the year, we have officer training for our new officers. Next, we'll be Kiara talking about degrees.
I'm Kiara Ittri and I'm the youth sentinel. I will be talking about FFA degrees and SAEs. The easiest, like first degree you can get in FFA is called the green hand degree and you just basically get that, you have to be enrolled in FFA and have an SAE. The next degree is a chapter degree and for that you have to have received a green hand degree, completed an agricultural class, have an SAE and have 10 hours of community service. And the degree after that is a state degree and for that one you have to have received a chapter and green hand degree, be an active FFA member for at least two years, completed two years of agricultural classes, have an approved SAE and 25 hours of community service. And the highest degree you can earn in FFA is called the American degree and you have to have to receive the last three degrees, been an active FFA member for at least three years, completed three years of agricultural classes, 50 hours of community service, have an SAE and have a C grade, grade average or better. And an SAE is a supervised agricultural experience and it's basically a hands-on project involving agricultural education. Some examples of this is like owning a herd of beef cows, working on a farm or like selling eggs. And next will be Jake talking about CDEs.
Thank you.
Well, my name is Jacob Curti and I'm the secretary of Barocca FFA. Today, I'll be talking about CDEs and LDEs. And CDEs are career development events and LDEs are leadership development events, which was hold, held in Westby this year. And CDEs, they, and LDEs, their purpose are to challenge FFA members with critical thinking skills and decision-making skills, foster teamwork and promote communication while recognizing the value of FFA competition and individual achievements. Some, the CDE is taking place in Platteville this year, March 19th. And some careers include egg mechanics, agronomy, dairy cattle, dairy products, farm business management, agriculture, horses, junior dairy, livestock, meats, poultry, sales, veterinary, science and wildlife. And that's all it is. Mr. Hardy?
And I get to end it up. And I thought it was interesting because that's our charter, 90 years old tomorrow. So I looked back in the, you know, we have yearbooks back to like 1920, very cool. So I started here in 90. 65 to 90 was Gene Schrader. We had another egg teacher, 58 to 64, Kenneth Hudson. Prior to that, 46 to 57 was Houghton Carlisle. And then the man that was here in 1929, we chartered, was Richard Powers, who actually wrote some agricultural textbooks, which I have a couple down, down the ag room. So I'm the fifth ag teacher in 90 years here. So what that should say is something about community support, administrative support. Because if, you know, and if you don't, if you don't support the egg teachers in the FFA, they just go away. That's, that's how that works. We appreciate that as an FFA chapter. As you can see, we stay quite busy with a lot of activities throughout the year and any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Why are you stationed by the owl?
Oh. You've got a big crowd, they don't want to hear you. Alright, thanks.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Oh, wait.
Sorry, I just, I just, I'm so excited. So one thing I want to ask is, can I get this framed? Can I take on that responsibility?
Well, it is framed, that's the original frame.
Well, it's kind of, the paper's falling apart, Lloyd. So could I do something to make it?
Frame the frame.
Same frame?
Frame it all. But we, we can reframe it, it's actually lived in my closet since the remodel. It was in a, down, their access had water stains.
Right, you know where I'd like to see it, in the trophy.
Well, that would be kinda cool.
Exactly. So, if I give it back to you, do you promise you'll do that? Or should I take it and do it by myself?
Should we get that note back?
Thank you. So first of all, I want to thank all of you for speaking and I want to thank you for your involvement in FFA. It's an amazing organization. Lloyd does a fantastic job and it's, it's a great experience for you and a leadership experience and so, thank you for your willingness to come and speak. I know we had to change our meeting and we really appreciate that. I do have one thought, if you're willing to do, if you meet a project, and it's composting. And I would love to see our district compost all of the wasted food at some point and there's some machines that do it and there's some things that we can do. And I know we're doing something with milk cartons, but if your organization would like to take on a job, Lloyd, I would, just my own little initiative that I, and then it could be used in the greenhouse and it could be used in some different gardens that we're using in the middle school, elementary school, things like that. Just a thought. And anyway, so, thank you for your work and thank you for coming.
One incidental fact, you realize that the third largest convention of the FFA convention has been in Indianapolis. The only two conventions that are bigger are the Democratic and the Republican National Convention. They turned the city of Indianapolis pretty blue. They used to turn Kansas City blue back in the day. It's a remarkable organization, remarkable devices that we've had over the years. Thanks, Lloyd and the group.
So the next item, we have, would like to welcome all of our visitors. We don't typically have a lot of visitors like this, so thank you all for coming, we appreciate it. And we do have some public comment and Katie Moyne is going to speak. Yeah, I am a kindergarten teacher.
So hello, I'm here speaking about, on behalf of the Barocca Elementary and Barocca Montessori School that were in, as we're in the process of hiring a new principal. Many of the staff came together in the last few weeks and were talking, write this, to write this letter. We look forward to working with the administration and the board as we pursue candidates for this position. So dear members of the school board, we are writing this letter in response to action item 9A, elementary principal posting timeline. We appreciate that representatives will be allowed to participate in the hiring process. However, we also noted that staff participation is only sought during the first round interviews. While we acknowledge that the board holds the ultimate decision, the staff has to work with that candidate on a daily basis, even when the promises made in the interview don't align with the follow-through after the hire. As representatives of an interested and affected party in this decision, we believe we have a dedicated staff whose input would be of great benefit when choosing a long-term candidate for this longstanding issue. In the past, staff has participated in the hiring process and in the end, their recommendation was ignored. We hope this won't be the case this time and would encourage you to consider allowing for some continuity throughout the entire process. Over a, for over a decade, Barocca Elementary and Montessori staff has had a revolving door of individuals filling the principal position. Whether they use the job as a stepping stone to further their aspirations, they lacked the ambition or motivation required, or their initial qualifications didn't meet expectations, there has been a substantial turnover in this position at our school. We have a large and diverse population of over four, 500 students. The elementary principal is responsible for two different schools with markedly, with markedly different styles. He or she needs to be knowledgeable in both areas. Over the years, the amount of documentation and required DPI paperwork has substantially increased for everyone in the district. While we understand the importance of having a candidate well-versed in the acronyms of education, such as RTI, PLC, PBIS, title and more, we believe that successful leadership encompasses so much more. A skilled principal should be able to meet the administrative demands, but also be able to prioritize the day to balance students and staff needs as well. This would foster increased visibility, greater accessibility, reduced discipline and genuine relationships with both students and staff. He or she should be able to participate in a trusted sharing of ideas and non-threatening differences of opinion, along with follow-through when issues are left open-ended. Often these competencies play out in time rather than being guaranteed in an interview. Successful leadership will come from a person with a bona fide commitment to our school and community. And he or she should be able to build genuine, meaningful relationships with students, staff and the public. By greeting them kindly, getting to know them personally, having a sense of humor, being visible in the classroom or the halls, and participating in special school activities, the principal will demonstrate his or her true investment in the position. We hope that when you consider 9A, principal posting timeline and the corresponding committee work, that you will create a schedule that allows for participation from elementary staff representatives and for the continuity throughout the entire process. We hope you take all these points into consideration when you further discuss the hiring of a new principal at Barocca Elementary and Montessori Schools. Thank you for your consideration, the staff members of Barocca Elementary and Montessori Schools.
And what's going to happen in the next year? The next agenda item is, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, which includes proof of public notice, approval of agenda, and lowering limits in voucher summary one in the amount of $286,282.69. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor vote by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Action item eight is voucher summary two. A motion to approve the voucher summary, summary two in the amount of $253,600, $253,600.24 as presented. Is there a motion? Any discussion? All in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Aye.
Donations over $250. Is there a motion to accept donations in the amount of $6,095.58 from the Barocca Athletic Booster Club? 1,500 of that is for hockey jerseys. $218.98 is a breakaway banner for cheer. 2,440 is elementary school gym wall mats. 1,000 is huddle. $936.60 is sign at the athletic field with thanks for their generosity. Is there a motion to accept these very generous donations? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Appointments, there's two appointments. Is there a motion to accept the appointment of James Shipper, night custodian, and Josie McFellin, .50 FTE assistant gymnastics coach?
Well, that's a motion.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, yeah. Just that we were very happy, we were very happy to have Josie back helping with gymnastics and, and that's a, she wasn't able to join the, the team until halfway through the season, but we're very happy to have her there helping with the team. And we're also very happy with our selection for night custodian. James has trained with us for a while and is very familiar with the school, has worked all levels, all different areas of the, the facilities and done an excellent job. But we had seven people apply, four of whom had custodial experience coming in. We set four interviews up, one was a no-show, but the other three all came and were very professional and competent applicants and we were very happy with that. Just looking back a few years, we didn't have very many applicants for positions like this when we would post them, but, so there was some good competition for James going through the interview process, but he did a, a very good job and we're very pleased to have him joining the team.
I think we should also congratulate James and Josie. I believe that she's also just graduated as well, but I know James has just graduated from school. So congratulations on their hard work and dedication and their willingness to work for our district. Is there any other discussion? With that, all in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, track club cooperative agreement with the Soto area school district. Is there a motion to approve the 2019/20 track club agreement with the Soto area school district? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just that, the parents of the track club had an interest in developing our own team or working with a barge, maybe finding some more shooting locations available. And I think that may still be a goal for us in the future. I think that the team's gonna continue to work to develop and grow and perhaps that'll be something that becomes more of a Barocca-centered team. But the relationship with the Soto was very good, very effective last year. The, the families liked it, the kids had a great time. They have good coaches and a good organization, so we're happy to be working with them again this year and, and if that continues, that would be great too. But there are so many kids out that it is a bit of a challenge to get them already scheduled on the ranges and so, that's something that we'll continue to work on. But very, very pleased, the Soto's very happy to have us cooperate with them again this year and we're happy to do that too.
Has the signup process already started for this club? When is the, when does it close?
Not exactly sure, the Soto coach actually came over and met with interested students a week or two ago.
I think it was some sort of church.
Sometime in March, I remember, even though maybe they wanted it sometime in March. Do you know how many students are interested?
I don't have official totals this year.
Last year's about 18 or?
Yeah, something like that last year.
Twenty.
There were some middle school students. Any other questions?
The question I have is, we did a one-year trial, is this the, take care of that one year trial and extend it then, or do we have another action that we need to do?
He said act, it was just for one year, the first year, so it's essentially a one-year agreement again.
And this is the same thing through another one year?
One year.
Okay, you want to make sure we dotted our i's, crossed our t's?
Right.
Just in case they choose to do something different in the future. Any other discussion now? With that, all in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Girls hockey playoff agreement with Westby Youth Initiative and Cashden. Is there a motion to approve girls hockey playoff agreement with Westby Youth Initiative and Cashden? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion here or Jason?
Just that, just that this is an update, we've had teams join us or schools join us in the past, in and out, as the interest is there with the students. So it's really just an adjustment to where the students are interested this year.
Yeah, this year it's, this would be adding Cashden to our group. And just to plug it out there, if you didn't hear about our girls playoff game.
Six overtimes.
We're trying to research it, it's possibly the longest high school hockey game in the game's history. Six overtimes and a goaltender with over 100 saves on the night, so.
Is that a record as well?
Oh, no.
Put it this way, if it's not, it's a lot.
It's a good save percentage, definitely. So congratulations to the girls on their hard part of it.
108 out of 110, that's pretty good.
It's a heartbreaker too.
But a great story to tell.
Yeah.
For a long time.
Good, just to hear about that one.
All in favor vote by saying aye. All in favor vote by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is the elementary window project. Is there a motion to approve the elementary window project bid for Market and Johnson in the amount of $198,501 as recommended by the building and grounds committee?
Make that motion in behalf of the board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would you like to share any information, Robert, about the process on that?
Maybe we could just refer to, you know, do it, Mike?
Sure, that's fine. As we know, this is a process that the board's been dealing with for quite some time, understanding that, and got the referendum and that was something that was going to be dealt with through that, you know, building project and when that failed, we needed, you know, to still continue to move forward with it because water infiltration is a problem in with the elementary school windows. Basically, in a nutshell, we engaged a company last summer to do a test of a solution that we have found and it seems to have worked really well. Basically, we're reconstructing the draining of the windows by removing the face block, re-flashing, installing drip edge and then putting it all back together. Trying to keep from having to put new face block on the outside of our building. It's, it's quite the project to get done. It's also very noisy and would be disruptive to a class. We've gotta, you know, coordinate that with this summer and the summer school program. Obtained in all, in all three total bids for doing the same project, Market and Johnson's was the low bid and we're very comfortable with them in their, their work on, with our district, but a number of districts that they've done. So, tomorrow we'll make the call and start the logistical conversations as to, you know, getting this, this rolling with the goal of knocking it all out in one summer. There's a lot of windows in the elementary school, about 175 openings, so.
Do you think that, George? No, I don't think so, just, just that we realize that obviously coming out of the referendum that was supposed to be taken care of there, we realize it's an issue that you're having to deal with. So it's nice that we have representation to hear that as well. And not just concerned about the, the leaking of the windows, but then long-term, what are the effects on that and making sure from a mold and, and, and anything that would happen from just dampness and that's important, that that's mitigated as well. If it's broken, the artifacts, this is what I said.
It actually came in lower than what we had anticipated. This was a bonus. And then there's also going to be some cleanup involved with it and some landscaping involved with it because there'll be some damage to the outside when they're doing the work. And they've been very willing to work at night and perhaps on the weekends so that they can get this done a little faster and not interfere with education during the day of our students and staff, so.
And that's something to learn as we build a schedule to, we'll be trying to build the best schedule we can to, to support education and we also know, depending on how the project rounds, it may impact summer school just in terms of where we hold classes this summer and things like that. So there's a lot we have to find out yet as we get prepared to move into the summer, but we'll be planning with them to have that schedule laid out and if there are any disruptions to, or changes to summer school, to know that right away. But hopefully they can time it so that it's not, it's built around our schedule and it's not too much change for us.
It'll definitely affect the custodial staff too, so, been a lot of discussion about that. So thank you to the buildings and grounds and to Mike and Phil for working on this so that we can get it done as quickly and efficiently financially, physically, responsibly as possible. All in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Overnight field trip is the next agenda item. Is there a motion to approve the overnight field trip as requested? Is there a second? Any discussion? All right.
It's, I mean, she did, I heard you did a very nice explanation. But the Montessori E2 students will be going to Stevens Point for a Valley stewardship conference. There's a... they've been doing project water testing, so they're going to use that to go to summit and learn and compare their results from other students. So Stevens Point has a natural resources college there, and so they have quite a connection. So it should be a nice event for them. Those five or six students that'll be going and staying overnight and participating there. So it's a good opportunity for those kids.
Well, how the water work in terms of testing is being done there at Stevens Point. So all these tests you hear from Southwest Wisconsin and the ones coming out of Vernon Crawford and Richmond County, all those water tests are going to be done at Stevens Point. So it's real timely, so we do with 2019 being the year of water and continuing into 2020 and beyond.
All in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next agenda item is information. We have the elementary principal posting timeline. If you want to share that.
So we've had the position posted for two weeks now. On weekend, which is the state side for public posting for administrative positions and for teaching positions. So anyone who's interested in working in Wisconsin from anywhere in the country knows to apply through weekend. So that post can be up through the end of this week. And then we'll be doing the review process, planning for the first round principals. We've got a first round elementary principal interviews, March 11th and 12th. We... when we do the posting, we put tentative dates out so that candidates know that the interviews may occur too and they can plan for those. With conferences following where they are, we've been working a little bit at what schedule might work best. And now we're probably thinking about using most of the day on the 11th to interview candidates and see if we can do that in one day with a team of staff and the elementary school administrators. And then from that, we'll bring back however many we want for a second round interview finalists to meet the next week. Depending on how many people we have with the 18th and the 19th, we'll have a couple of interview sessions for those folks. They'll definitely interview with the board, have a formal interview there. And we also like the town hall process that we had last year. We have an opportunity for the candidates to meet the staff and talk openly with the staff and have a little interaction there. We think that that worked well too. So we'll be... we're still working on the details of that. I've asked for participants from the elementary staff and also I've had a survey to ask for some input from the staff just the profile of the elementary principal that they would like to see. So we're using that to guide us through the process too.
And then the first round, there won't be any board members for the first round. That will be all staff. And then the board will be in the second round of interviews. So that way, we just thought that that would work out a little bit better because the board was involved in the first round last time. And so that way this will just be staff and administration. And then the administrative team is going through all of the applications and they're choosing the people that will be interviewed. Do you have... do you know how many applicants we received?
Twenty, twenty now today. Yeah, it grew today, so just during the day-to-day, there's more people applying. I have to believe this week will probably be the busiest as it's getting closer to the deadline and the process, so twenty now.
And what is the closing date?
This Friday.
This Friday?
At midnight.
At midnight?
Yeah.
But we wanted to give them Friday anyway in case people want to... All right, so thank you and look forward to that process. The next item is the preliminary 2020-21 budget. Mike, do you like to share that?
Sure. Friday anyways. Had any chance to see how the tall point appears. And it's not a long tall point. In your board and materials, I was able to generate a bunch of different things from the bear model that graphically show just some different parts of this budget and where we're at. However, it does not project well to a screen nor does it lead to good discussion because there's just too much information in that. So if you have any questions on that, just let me know. So where are we at with the budget? You know, when we're talking budget in 2021, we're there. So we're right now starting to, you know, in the development of the proposed budget. Staff and board collaborate to develop a proposed budget that identifies the expected revenues, expenditures and fund balances. Prior to the budget hearing, which is held in conjunction with the annual meeting, the school board must approve a proposed budget to present at the budget hearing. And we will be doing that probably starting in April. Again, in May, June, July, as things become more concrete, we'll just keep updating that proposed budget. We'll then have the budget hearing and annual meeting. That will be held at the same time in place as the district annual meeting. And during that time, the board will receive the budget. And following the budget hearing, the electors at the annual meeting have the power to vote tax for the operation of the school district and the financial implications approved previously. The original budget adoption then is approved at a meeting after the public hearing, but no later than the meeting the school district sets the amount of the tax levy. And historically, in group with the original budget adoption and the tax levy certification have occurred at the same meeting. That's officially referred to as the official adopted original budget. So.
Budget meeting is in September and...
Yep, the annual meeting is the third Monday in September.
Right after Vernon County Fair.
Yep. So then we set the levy and Wisconsin statutes require the school board to approve a tax levy by November 1st. And then Robert must certify the levy to the municipalities on or before November 10th. So the preliminary budget where we're at right now, I mean, we've gotten to a... But maybe it did. No. It did. Sorry. Oh, no, it did.
Make up your mind.
It said it did, but then it didn't.
But it's not.
Yeah. It says to a screen. Again, this is a lot of what was in your packet that obviously does not make for good viewing on here.
Get the plus up there and give it...
Yeah, the blue column is the 1920, you know, where we're, you know, projecting and what our current budget is. And we will be going... and right now, like I said, we're at a balanced budget. And I'll get into the tax levy impacts and everything. You know, not much work has been spent yet with the salaries and benefits other than, you know, like an overall 2% increase in the salaries and related benefits. A 2% increase in the supplies budget and that type of thing. And that's typically where we've been running. I think the CPIU is well under a point and a half. Our district's never held to the CPIU. We'll build our salary and benefit schedule accordingly and see where we're at. At this point in time, it does look like we can balance our budget. As you get further off to the right and those, you know, really not ever approving those projections for, you know, '24, '25, '26, you can see that they do have a deficit there. Quite honestly, that's caused by expenses continuing to increase without a related increase in revenues. And we, as we all are more, you know, know, we have to adjust to that as we go. So state budget's going to change every two years. There's not too much hand wringing to be done. But even with the referendum that we have in April, I would anticipate we will be, according to this, be looking to cut, you know, $150,000 to $200,000 a year from regular inflationary increases.
So Mike, this does include the passing of the $550,000?
It does. Yep, no, it does, thank you. And I'll reiterate that too. If you look at our tax levy summary over, you know, since 2014-15, where we were basically just a smidge on a mil rate basis above the state average. The state average is the top line there where it's 1035 to 934 in 1920. Our district has, really, our taxes have decreased over the last five years. And that's primarily due to our debt service falling off. You know, we've been able to, you know, maximize our aid revenue, which doesn't decrease the tax levy also. But taxes, the tax rates in Baroque are well below the state average and even well below a lot of our average districts. The composition of the tax levy, again, it's going to change again this year, as Angie mentioned. Right now, everything that I'm doing has the passage of the referendum approved that's in April at $550,000. If you look at it on a mil rate basis and the... By the different classifications of the levies, as you can see, the general fund and then the general fund with the referendum approved, the general fund actually is going down a little bit with the revenue limit calculation of about 30 cents. Again, that will change. I've got that little disclaimer up there, this will change by October 2020. It always does. Ultimately, what our aid comes in at changes a lot on that. But it does show the additional $200,000 that we are requesting in through the referendum process. Our non-referendum approved debt, that was the unfunded retirement liability that was refinanced back probably in 2004, 2005, somewhere around there. We've got about three, we'll get to that slide next. Got a few years left on that. That is subject to the revenue limits, so that is coming from operations where the referendum approved debt is outside the revenue limit. And that number, as you can see, was designed, those debt service payments were designed to decrease this, starting this year for the next few years. So that's the composition of our mil rate. Our debt service in Baroque, if you look at non-referendum debt, we've got basically two years of 2021 and 2122 to have that debt paid off. There's $215,000 remaining on that. We could pay it off early, but the interest rate on that is, I mean, honestly, we may be earning more right now than we're incurring by not paying off that debt. The referendum debt, as you can see, it's $570,000 in 2021. And then it shoots way up to 1.2 million. That's reflective of the regular payment of about $565,000 and the money that we have been levying in addition to what we can. And this is the first year that it's callable. So we'll be able to advance pay off some of that. Now that will increase our aidable cost, which will result in additional aid the next year. But it also basically took a year off the debt and then, you know, decreased the amount of interest we'll be paying in those last two bond payments. And we'll be debt-free, you know, sans any more new borrowing before then. We'll be debt-free at the end of the 2023-24 school year. Right now, we have $2,666,000 outstanding of principal on that debt. That's basically what I have for the budget update.
So are you going to levy for the 1.2 million or does that come out of fund balance?
It'll come out of the fund balance and the debt service. We've been setting that aside. And basically, that's maintained our tax levy a little bit. Kept it from dropping as much as it probably would have in a couple of those years. And it's a good use of funds. It'll save us money in the future.
But the average state tax levy could be increased by the fact of many referendums have passed in the last few years, although there was what, 0 for 2 at this last...
Pre-sale.
Pre-sale. But they have historically been higher approved rate.
Yep. Yep, and the average without those though, as we are seeing, Robert, the strides that the state has made to decrease the tax levy by limiting the increases in the revenue limit and trying to put some more money into the state aid formula have resulted in a decrease in taxes and percent...
And then we're still waiting with legislature and the governor would potentially do with their surplus as to whether it would do aids for schools or taxes.
I guess we...
We don't know what will happen there.
We don't know what's going to happen. We do know what the assembly passed and it did not include money for schools.
His initiative was to only be there in April.
But the assembly did not.
No.
Did not do that. We don't...
So they don't know if he's going to veto it or not?
Yep.
We don't.
I don't, I don't know. Maybe you have better insight than I do.
I've been traveling down to Madison.
Yeah, and DC.
So thank you, Mike, for putting that together. Appreciate it. I know there's going to be some more information about what you guys are willing to be doing in the next month or so. The next item is administrative reports and the mid-year student achievement. Pretty nice to start because there's a whole list of...
And Mike, can you pull that one up?
Yeah, I was, I'm sorry, Kiel, wait. Which one do you want?
It's the Edgiclimber.
Let me show you. So what this goes back to is some, it probably started a year and a half ago, probably. Look at Leanne, we've been looking at trying to give more informative reports through Edgiclimber as teachers will become more familiar with it and have been using it more. And one of the challenges in any of the analytics companies that are around the state and with Edgiclimber too, was in trying to show growth scores for students. And so we see students improvement over time. And so Leanne and I would go in and try to explore ways of saying, well, if we report it this way, can we pull the chart this way? We worked with Edgiclimber and it didn't work so well as we kept trying to figure it out. But we didn't give up. And Krista came in and started helping us too, the three of us. Why, at times we got frustrated, at times we got very excited at the results, but we learned as we went and how to build some growth charts. So we'll... and they may chime in at any time if they are interested because they are very enthusiastic and very proud of this project because it did turn, it's turning out very well and it's providing information that teachers can discuss and work with as a staff and be very helpful. So we start out with the first, the first screening is really simple. But one of the things that hasn't been so available in the past is a simple... We do three screening tests in STAR a year and trying to see how students do from beginning of the year to the end of the year, how much growth there is for students. And this is, this is STAR reading for...
Third grade.
And this is the... and this is the fall, the fall score here and then the winter. And the red is below benchmark and green is above benchmark. And so what you see in the simple, just looking at this, is quite a bit of growth in our students who are above benchmark and quite a bit of reduction in students below benchmark, which is what we would like to see as in the course of the year is growth, as the students grow and improve. What we'll do is in the spring after our last, our final test before the summer, we'll add a third column to show how to continue growth for this year. Because one of the things that's important for all of us, our teachers, SLOs, we set goals for our students each year is just how the students grow during the course of the year over that time. And being able to look at that and we'll go from here till at the end, we'll see a growth chart for students over several years. And so a lot of information there to begin. But what's good about this is a teacher can just click on either of these sections and get a list of the students that scored in that section and then get more information. So as these charts are live active charts, as we get into ones with more detail...
So as these charts are live active charts, as we get into ones with more detail, students can explore and see if there was a change in a category, you know, which students changed, or which students grew. So this is the whole grade level combined together.
And the one thing that I asked Kial is, in the future, if it would be possible to have the percentages in each color? And I don't know if that's possible or not. And I know this is, and this is one of the board's goals, is to receive more data to show the growth of our students, and so this is very timely. And then to see that whole cycle for the year, to see what we might need to do as a district, what's going well, what's not going well. But just with my eyes and how I look at things, for me, having a number and the colors is just a little bit more helpful, but I don't know if that's possible in the future or not.
It actually is, it's just very small and difficult to read. But you'll see a little bit later tonight, because Tom and John have both done a different chart, and John's been doing it for a while with the middle school, and so the data is there charted, so you see how many students moved in different sections. And Tom did that color-coded, we'll see that in a little bit too. But these can be, there are different tags that you can put on the chart. You can show a growth line, you can show different things. But we'll show you a couple of those variations. Essentially, what we want everybody to see at this point today is that teachers are looking at the information, we're working on it, monitoring it, learning from it as we go. But what most of this do, and I say this all the time, because teachers are very curious about their students' performance, and if there's something that's going well, they like to see, you know, what's going well, and who's doing well. And if somebody's not doing well, it becomes this challenge to figure out, well, what's, you know, going on with this student, and how can we help them? So what a lot of this does is it helps to raise questions. As you, as we look at it, it shouldn't, there aren't answers when you look at a chart like this. They're just questions, you know, what's going on here? And then you, and we found this with Leanne, and Krista and I were working on it. As soon as we'd be looking at something, all of a sudden, they're clicking in and going, well, look at this! You know, these students, and then they're right away digging in to see more about the students. But, so this is, again, very simple, this is STAR math for third grade.
STAR reading, STAR reading.
Next one's math, I was looking at, yeah, on my computer. So this is seventh grade math. And again, you see the positive growth from the fall to the winter testing, very basic and easy to see. So let's go to the next screen. Then Tom, this is,
Again, and this gives you a little bit of a look at our longitudinal data. You see the current second grade students, where they scored in their, in the fall of their first grade year, their winter score, and then their spring score, and then second grade fall and third, and second grade winter. The highlighted, the yellow there, is kind of what you were talking about before, Angie, when you're actually in Edgiclimber, and you hover over one of those bar graphs, it tells you the number of students in there that have met that percentile. So again, by using the actual tool, this isn't as effective as a slide, but using the actual tool, it gives you a breakdown of the number of students in that area. And then you can click on it, and it will give you that list of students. And you can click on it again and get subskills, so see how they're doing in the subskills areas as well. So it really is a very informative tool. When you look at it just like this, it just gives us a basic look of how our students progress over the year. Our green grew, the number of students scoring above the percentile, or above benchmark grew, which is what you're looking for. And then in second grade, you can see, again, that red zone is shrinking. One of the questions that we ask ourselves when we look at this, though, is, what changed from the end of first grade to second grade? There's a lot of changes that happened with,
There was a lot of whispering over that.
Yeah, the test is different, things like that as well. There's also summer slide and things like that that happen too. And you can see some of that happens even on a national level, in some of the slides you can see here in that.
So are you able to drill down and find out if there's any methods or practices that work better for a group of students that you have?
Not necessarily work better. What we can do is drill down and see what seem to be our strengths. So as we look at our curriculum and our practices, it's easy to go in there and see, okay, we are definitely strong in this unit here. But maybe fractions, if we're really talking about math. Fractions is one that we seem to struggle in. So, again, we look at, well, is it something that our resource can help us with? Or do we need to look at an additional resource? Or do we want to bring in some professional development to help support us in fractions and teaching the fractions too? So the tool can help us in those ways. Yes, you can drill down and see what those different subskills are, and how are we doing on those.
It was pretty remarkable, and when I looked at this, to notice the second grade and that difference in efficiency coming right from the summer.
Yep.
And another big difference is that the three bar, the three first bars are from first grade, and in math, it's read to them aloud in first grade. And then beginning the first one in second grade, they are doing all the reading themselves. So that's a huge shift in how they comprehend math.
Absolutely.
Understanding, that's important, understanding how the students perform. Let's go to the next one too. So what you see here, Tom will talk about this, is with any of the slides, you just simply select a different setting, and now you see a more detailed breakdown. The darker blue being the top 90th percentile, the lighter blue is 75 to 89 percentile, the green is the middle percentile of 57. So you see a breakdown over just the two, into more fields.
Well, and if you can go back just a second to the one that was for math by grade from first to second, then the question would be, because I don't see the readings for in here necessarily, so, you know, are we teaching the proper vocabulary? Is it, you know, the reading level of this particular grade? But then that's a concern, because if it's because of reading, then, you know, what can we do as a district to increase the ability for the students to be able to read at a higher level?
Exactly, and that's like Kial was saying earlier. Well, we don't always get answers out of this, but we get some very good questions for us to reflect on and take back and figure out, okay, what are the areas that we seem to be weak in? What can we do to beef that up? Sometimes it's simple things too, it, when you look at a grade level like this, three of your top students move out of the district. All of a sudden, changes your scores greatly. We have some kids with IEPs maybe that move into the district and they're struggling in some of those areas, your red zone grows a little bit. And, you know, without seeing the piece over time, when you look at a student over time, it gives you a better idea of those students. But when you look at general data like this, that's where we take a look and we get curricular questions and instructional strategy questions, where we think, okay, what are there some things that we can do in adjust to improve in those areas? So that next slide here, like Kial was saying, this breaks it down into all those subsections. And once again, you can click on one of those colored zones, we can take a look at kids in that zone and figure out what are the subskills that those kids need to work on. So this helps us a little bit more, fine, finally, and when we look at like win groups and things like that, we can take a look in there and say, okay, these kids are grouping together, they seem to be struggling with the skill set. This win group, maybe we can work on this skill there to help beef them up and get them stronger in that area. So again, Edgiclimber's been a really valuable tool for us to be able to look at data in very different ways.
And this is the first three are first, first grade fall, winter, spring, and the last two are second grade fall and winter. For math, we'll go to the next one. What you'll see is more charts, the first three are first grade, the second three are second grade, third three are third grade, and the last two are fourth grade. So this is the same group of students in fourth grade now, going back four years. And so a teacher looking at this can go back and see the same students over time, can go back and look and see how they performed at an earlier level, and maybe learn a little bit more. So this is very valuable for teachers, as they're looking at and saying, I wonder if my student that I have down in fourth grade has always struggled with this particular skill, like fractions, for example, being, you know, at what point did they start to struggle with a certain element of reading? And so they can investigate that a little bit, and look and maybe problem solve what a student might need, or what they can try to do to help a student, so. And you can see there's a lot of information that will start to be available here. Again, we didn't want to publicly be able to, you know, hover over a column because names pop up and student scores pop up as soon as you do that. But that makes it very, very good to use, so. And this one, this is another, and it can be overlaid on the other charts, but this is a growth line simply for, for math, and Tom, I don't know if you want,
Yeah, and again, we're kind of comparing ourselves here to, as you can see across the bottom, our average score, the national, national 25th percentile score, and then the national, I forget.
50th.
50th percentile, yeah.
What's difficult to see on this one is there's a blue and a black line here hovering over the gold line. The black is the 50th percentile, national score, and the blue is 50th percentile for Baroque. But it's very parallel, obviously, just dips very little below at the beginning of second grade, and then rises back above it, and stays above it. Very parallel with it, as Tom said before, occasionally you see nationally a summer slide, score nationally that we, that we may be very parallel to in some cases. But again, it's to give an idea that what we can look at here is, what we're wanting to see is students growing over time, over the years. Same students over a number of years, are they continuing to improve and grow? Because that's what we all want for the students. And the next one, this is the overlay, so it's a little bit easier to see because the blue line, which is the hot, the higher line, is Baroque, the black line is national. You can see we dipped just below it for a moment, and then we stay above it.
Good news is we have a good recovery after that summer slide. We have a good recovery after each one of those. But yeah, you know, a goal would be for us, or a question for us to look at would be, maybe there's something we can adjust with our summer school programming that can help adjust that and keep them up a little bit higher. And those are just questions that we have to ask and reflect on and see, what are things that we can tweak to do.
It was pretty remarkable, actually, when looking through all of these, how different it was in the spring, how students were doing, and what it was like when they came back in the fall. Every single, every single year. But this particular grade, you know, you're still talking about, you know, 35% of the students are below the 50% level. And that's, that's a large percentage of students, and that includes the winter.
It does.
For that particular grade.
So let's go to the next slide too, Zet's reading, and this is math. And again, this is fourth grade math, which the scores start first grade. And you see, again, the performance, very parallel to the national performance, dipping below at one point, recovering, staying very parallel with the national performance. And again, this is to give an idea of when a teacher can look at this for the student and can go back and look and see how their groups changed, or how students performed over time. This can be very helpful. Tom, anything?
The one thing I'd take a look at there, as we look at the far right, the one thing that we're seeing is that that number is going down. And I would say, I think one of the success stories maybe we've had this year is we've gone to a co-teaching inclusion model there in fourth grade, and we think some of our lower students are really starting to see the benefit of that. Their scores are getting better, and we're increasing. So, I mean, I think there are some, again, some things that we can take away from this. While this grade level has maybe a high special education population, we've made some changes in practices and things like that, that I think are starting to be effective. So I'm really looking forward to our spring school.
Next sheet, and then this is one that, as Angie was asking about, the percentage in numbers and, John has also done this, it's in the board packet too, that was planning for the end of the year and charting the progress of the students, as he's done in the map of the year. But here you see the number of students and the percentages at each category.
So VAMS has tested in the same STAR format as, I just wanted to double check. I see that it's on there, but I just wanted to make sure I understood completely.
Yeah, that was something that VAMS had decided in the original charter, is that they would participate in the testing that the other students participated in.
Just think, if we could take that summer slide and cut it in half.
I think that all the time.
How that would set us up for success.
I agree, yep.
We do have a large percentage of students, though, that come to summer school, so it does make me wonder, perhaps we could do something different, I don't know like that.
Exactly, and I, you know, I know, different districts do different things. And what I, what I think a key that we want to do is, find a district that seems to have a really good summer school program that's been successful in keeping scores up like that, and maybe try to emulate what they do. It could be all sorts of things. It could be the timing of when we have our summer school, it could be some of the programs that we have for summer school as far as the reading piece. And maybe there's like summer school programs that focus really on those low kids, getting them in and doing an intense one. I know some districts that do like a two-week intense thing, is they come back to school to get those kids that are low ready to ramp up again.
A good challenge for you.
Yeah.
Let's say we can find the answer to that.
I have seen school districts that do that, though they'll have two weeks in August for students to find out.
Yep.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we do have a two-week program, to start, jumpstart, jumpstart.
But that's for four-year and five-year olds?
No, that's for everybody. That's for everybody, yeah, it's through fourth, through entering fourth grade. Through students that will be entering into fourth grade.
And one of the things that we talked about too is,
Such a weak intensive.
Having this information, we want to take a look at those students that have participated too and see if it's made a difference for them in the past too. So that's one of our items to look at going forward. So this next chart is middle school, and it's pretty small, so it's not going to talk about a little bit. But what you have from the top left to right, informational text, key ideas and details by grade. So we're talking about getting into more detailed breakdowns into competencies. The second one at the top right is informational text, range of reading and level of text complexity by grade. The lower left is vocabulary acquisition and use by grade. And the bottom right is craft and structure by grade. So these are more itemized analysis and breakdown of scores in those particular tests.
This is, this is important for our, if you look at our curriculum rotation process, the review and revise year. This is an indicator of how well are we doing within the different areas of our curriculum, the big rocks, as we used to call them, which is important to see. But in general, this, what you're looking for is to see the blue on the top increase and the red decrease, and the greens are the bubble kids somewhere in the middle that just kind of, you know, we don't want to leave anybody behind, so. And again, as teachers click on this, each of those colors, it identifies the students, who's in there. And then you can see who did we help move up, or who did we leave behind and drop down? And what are we doing for those students, what are we not doing for them, so.
This was last year's seventh grade for the year, so this is, this is just looking at last year, one grade level for the year.
When it says informational text,
Text.
Sorry, that's what happens when I read something. I read it at home, and I kept thinking, what is this, is that change? What's an informational text, aren't they all information?
That's why I have sight words sometimes.
So this, this, that previous slide too, when you hear us talk about like intervention groups, which students should be targeted for what particular skills? That just tells us, these are students that we need to try to recover and help build the foundational skills of which students. Just click on those lower green and reds, and it tells you. So before I quit talking, because we're going to move on, I just want to say a big thank you to Leanne and Krista for putting this work together. This is very helpful. And then in the middle school, Jessica and Andrea will pick up and lead the teams and carry this board, so, thank you.
Another question I had is win time, and I know we've had in our district win time for quite a long, quite a few years. And I'm just wondering if you're doing the same type of thing to track win time? And if that's been successful, if it isn't successful? If it's successful in certain ways? I'm just curious about that. I don't know if there's a way that you can track that.
Yeah, we review that data quarterly. We look at that and decide, and create new groups based on that data there again. So, yeah, the data that we collect from these is used in a variety of ways, whether it be title groupings, or win groupings, whatever it may be. That information helps us figure out what students need to go where and, That information helps us figure out what students need to go where and that are in similar areas that need, in need of support. So again, it helps us create our groups.
So at the high school, we don't have a mid-year test, but I don't want to be lucked out, because our ACT data won't be coming up until, we probably start getting the first that I can make. But we still use the data, and we use a lot of the middle school data in a couple ways. Number one, we have our school success class, which is mainly for freshmen. What we did last year, and we're looking at doing for this year also, is we're determining students that are either low in reading or have a high due score, a few current dues, which is basically a score that those stuff in EK creates for students as far as dropout early warning system. So the student with the higher the score, statistically, they're saying the more likelihood that that student could be a potential dropout. Things that factor into that include grades, how many schools they transferred from with them, skill deficit, credit deficit once they get to a high school level, and attendance that they factor in. So what we've did over the last year is we target those students that we don't read their lower readers or had a high due score, and then encourage those parents to have them in the school success classes freshman, to try and get them off to a good start at high school. And then also math-wise, we use a lot of math data. High school, I mean, you need to earn three math credits while you're in high school. So it's really important that your place at the right level, because if your place at the wrong level, it can really make a mistake for you. I mean, if your place is too high a level, you may end up hating math and struggling, and even trying to get across to parents, okay, yep, if your place at geometry, okay, your kid can probably handle geometry, but if your place at geometry, you need to get through precalculus. You get comfortable in two years, you kept getting through precalculus, and then you get the, oh, that's, okay, let me think about that for a while. So what we actually did is we dug into the data, and we were using forward scores throughout all the middle school. We do a screener, a math screener, in kids before they enter the freshman year. And a little bit grade-wise, although grades can tend to be a little bit more subjective. And we use data from numerous years and track how those students did while they're in high school, and how many of them successfully completed three years, how many of them did two years and struggled and everything. And then we developed in-house some cut scores of where there seemed to be some natural cuts for kids who'd be successful. Things are going to happen, that we know it's not going to be a full group. Parents get divorced at fourteen, or, you know, there's things that happen within systems that are going to. But we wanted to create a system that statistically, in our world of analytics, create a system so that kids are going to have the most success, and be able to achieve what they can do, but at the same time be able to push them as much as they can. So last year, we rolled that out for the first time, and basically, and if any of you have freshmen, you probably would have gotten a sheet saying this is a recommended level that we put you at, contact us if you want to. I only had two parents actually contact us to recommend going up a level from what we recommended. And one of those two parents throughout the school year actually contacted us again, and they were kind of hoping they would have stayed with what we originally thought. So I think, because they're being successful, I'm certainly checking with my math teachers, especially as far as their freshman, are they in at the right spot, or are they, are we feeling like they're pushing themselves? And we've even looked at the possibility of, of transferring students that come in, maybe giving them a screener. We do look at their historical data, however, if they come from out of state, we may not have much historical data, because different states send different records. But basically, we're just trying to place them in an area where they can be successful, but at the same time challenge themselves. So those letters, we're always kind of running them, and we'll be adjusting them from year to year, just making sure that we're keeping that standard push. Historically, nationwide, I think fifteen percent of students do algebra in eighth grade. We tend to have a higher number than that that we bring in here. But I think we've been trying to see where their scores are at, and we want as many as can handle it, but we're not going to have, we're not going to have a public survey number that would say this is how many we're going to put in there. We want like this to be successful where each and every one of them are.
Oh, I know Keel and I have spoken about Algebra II actually being successful students in higher ed, if you get a C or better in Algebra II, it's a good standard for your success when you go on to higher education, plus the amount of activities that the students involve with, you know, extracurriculars and community, community service and things like that. So we're talking about perhaps in the future, maybe that can be included in one of our reports that we get, just to see how our students are doing, how many of our students take Algebra II, and obviously, we don't want to make a C or better something that becomes an easier thing to get, that's not the intent, but just to see the success of our students to go on and help out what we do. I know even in the technical college system, a student that takes Algebra II and gets a C has a much higher percentage of completion.
Yeah, the post-secondary colleges and ACT, we have a lot of that out there that shows the effectiveness of, too. If you've had a kid take Algebra II, you know it's probably historically one of the more challenging math classes, there's so many new items that are added into it, and it's just a big change this year, combining algebra and geometry together. So it's definitely going, and, you know, as we look ahead to next week's ACT exam, ideally, we'd like to get most kids through Algebra II for that exam. Almost, I guess like ninety-six percent of the math programs, or percent of the math questions on that exam are Algebra II or lower. There's a heavy emphasis on Algebra II. There's a, I think there's four questions that are trigonometry or precalculus, otherwise most of them are up to that level. So ideally, we get most of their students in Algebra II. Anybody going to post-secondary or any person that has Algebra II under their belt before they go to high school.
So the next one, just to show you, and we're not going to talk about this too much, but this is eighth grade math, going back to first grade. And they, there are, I mean, even as we looked at it, we realized that the groups were smaller the first couple of years, because we didn't have everybody tested in the window, the same window. So we, you know, even look, it's not perfect information, and it's also one of those things why we don't want people to be judging what they see visually, but digging in and seeing what it tells them, it's an important issue. Because we realized there weren't as many people in that, as many students in that group, but they probably did test, and so as they go through, you know, the group stays more consistent. Very slight growth in the number of students, but you can see the, this growth score pretty consistent again throughout. And then the last one is reading. This is again an eighth grade reading, and so it's our current eighth graders going back from the time they started. So this is something we worked hard to be able to produce, so that we could, you know, say, are we doing what we want to do, and what we tend to do with students? Are they growing as they go through our school? So this is a way we can look at that and see, and this is the last opportunity Leann and Krista have to correct anything I said, or add to it, or anything that way. Maybe you're just dying to say. She, Leann did not want me to mix these two together, because the, the growth line doesn't go with the, the bar chart, but that's okay, it's a lot going on here. It's different things, it's a lot going on. But anything else, administrators or Jana, anything that you heard, did you say anything much about this one?
I think that it was a timely, for the middle school, to look at a new resource for math. If you would look at the historical first through eighth grade math, the amount of green and light blue and dark blue got smaller, and that's never anything that you want to see, so looking at a new resource with a ready math program to be able to potentially hit more of the standards, or go maybe in a deeper depth of knowledge in the standards was, it was a timely change in math. And I look forward to being able to look at our scores and see, this is the first year of implementation, so it's not, the first year's always tripping, not always tripping through, but you're, you're learning the resource, and then after that, we'll see if the growth trend continues, and if it doesn't, then we have to be back at the drawing board again, because we're not going to sign on to something if we're not seeing the growth that we expect or need to see. So I think it's, it's always, we evaluate not just our teaching practices, but the resources that we have based on these.
And high school English is the same thing, and that was something we've been talking about, high school English, wanting that to improve and working on that for a few years, and going through a new, completing a new resource at the high school, implementing that this year, too. You know, we'll watch that and see what the impact is of that, and we're optimistic about it's having a good impact, but it may take a couple of years to be sure it's doing what we want.
Well, and looking at this, you really can see the areas of growth from seventh, eighth grade, or not the areas that you want to grow. And so, you know, I'm hopeful that that math program will be helpful. Once again, I'd like to thank Leann and Krista. I, I know that this was a lot of work, and we really appreciate it. It's part of the goals of the board to get more information to show student success, because that's what we're all here, and this definitely shows the growth or not growth of our students, and it's a lot of information to put together. So thank you for doing that for us, and working with it, and then sharing it with all of the teachers and staff, too, so that we can all improve what we're, what we're doing for our students.
And we will see, at the end of the year, we'll be making more decisions about the areas that we saw were strengths, and like John mentioned, the areas that we see challenges, because that may help us determine what we want to have for goals for the next year, based on things we want to address as teams, and so that will tie in. So we'll see, this time it was really more about, we've got a lot of new information that we're building, and a lot of different way to look at it and track it and research it, and so it'll only help us to be more effective and better able to respond and help kids. Well, thank you, everybody. Thank you, administrators, and thank you, Krista. Leann, thank you to all the teachers, too, for working hard with the information and trying to help your kids every day.
The next item is AGR, and that's, Krista's not here again, she wants to speak in town.
Yeah, I'm driving myself. He's going to tell me he wants me to pull this up on him.
The spray is still in the rash.
It's not the S period, it's just.
Oh. Okay, well, so the document that Krista and I have been working on, really what we tried to do was go through, and there was a lot of language in the old document, and so we tried to go through, and as Krista was saying, no flowers, just findings. So we cut out a lot of the extra language there, and tried to focus in and find a measurement that we can use throughout the whole school year. Again, I think a lot of them, you might notice the language in there, eighty percent can meet the goal. So the reason behind that is, when you have eighty percent of your students meeting the benchmark, it means that your curriculum and, and instructional strategies are working. That's what you're looking for, at least eighty percent of your students scoring that. So that was kind of our goal, that we set on the bar throughout that. The other thing that we tried to do when we looked at first grade on up was reducing the, we included the charts in there, and below the twenty-fifth percentile, twenty-fifth, forty-ninth, fiftieth, seventy-fourth, and seventy-fifth and above. We want, our goal was to reduce our students scoring below the twenty-fifth by half. And we've done pretty well on that, actually, so far. So I'm looking at the, looking at the kindergarten, we'll start with them. They use a sight word tool to benchmark their students there, and, let's see. So our goal was to have fifty out of the sixty-five students, seventy-seven percent of them, knowing eighty percent of the thirty sight words, and this was here at mid-year check. And so that's where we were so far, they're, they're doing pretty well on their goal there, moving to that eighty percent. For kindergarten, at the end of the second quarter, thirty-six out of sixty-five students, or fifty-nine percent, recognized eighty percent of the numbers from zero to thirty. So again, we're trying to get that up to that eighty percent, but we're making some progress. Our reading there, that's where they start, they have sixty-two students in first grade who receive the core instruction. Fall benchmark they use is Rigby, and the goal is to have a level two. So eighty-six percent of the students met or exceeded this benchmark during the fall screening period, and in the winter, we moved that benchmark up to a level ten. And eighty-seven percent of the students met or exceeded that benchmark during the winter screening period. So again, we're making really good progress there towards that final goal that we'll have at the end of the year. And I think all of our students were really making pretty good growth. Let's see, we had SIC, we went from eight students scoring below the twenty-fifth percentile for first grade math, down to six percent, or six students, I mean, scoring below ten percent. As we move into the reading for second grade, and we have fifteen students that scored below the twenty-fifth percentile, we're down to eleven students scoring below. For math, we had fourteen students scoring below the twenty-fifth percentile, and here, we've already cut that in half, they're down to seven students scoring below the twenty-fifth percentile in the winter. Third grade reading, we had, oh, our chart got messed up. We had seven students scoring below the twenty-fifth percentile, and we're down to five below the twenty-fifth percentile now. And for math, for third grade, we had four students scoring below the twenty-fifth percentile, and we're down to two. So again, I think we're making great progress towards those goals. The, the tools that we're using seem to be working, the teachers' instructional strategies seem to be working, so right now, our AGR is looking pretty good, the, the, the old Sage program, or the class size reduction program is seeming to be effective for us. It's working well.
Thank you. The next item is the mid-year elementary, and then it's called PBIS, and that's on Tom's.
So for the, for mid-year, we did an assembly back in January. The, the PBIS team had been looking at data all along, and they noticed three areas that seemed to be a major concern, and just talking with each other, too. Those areas were responsible in the hallway, coming back from lunch, responsible in the hallway, coming in from recess, and responsible in the bathroom. So the teachers put together, or the PBIS committee at least, put together a fantastic skit for the students to just kind of talk about all three of those different areas and what our expectations were, and that those are the things that we're going to be keen on here for the, for the next quarter. And not only did the kids love the skit, but I think it was very effective at getting the point across. The teachers really focused in on those areas that students moved through the building so that we could kind of see how they're picking up on the idea, picking up on the point. We kind of discussed recently that that really worked for a good two or three weeks, and maybe it started to wear off a little bit, so we're going to put out a reminder to students, too. And also then at the mid-year, or at that assembly that we had back in January, we announced their celebration, and of course, celebration, let's, we bought a bounce house into the gym, and the kids for a couple of days there had the bounce house during their PE time. It was greatly enjoyed by everyone. So that seems to be going really well, and again, we just talked about maybe giving us kind of a refresher here to, to let them know that we're still watching those areas, and we don't want things to slip, because they, they were really strong with it for a while, but we see some behavior slipping back in, so we're giving that reminder. And then we're starting to plan out our, our next celebration as well. So that's where we are.
So the middle school, it says, they do all the hard work and the good work. What's different about our data is it's not about location, it's about individual students. Their data is present everywhere, so it, it really switches kind of perspective. The individual grade levels do different activities to reward and motivate students, and I put a whole list for you there. There, our program is very different in fifth and sixth grade than seventh and eighth. Our seventh and eighth grade teachers have relaxed a lot on the.
than seventh and eighth. Our seventh and eighth grade teachers have relaxed a lot on the PBIS program, fifth and sixth grade. Teachers still use it quite a bit. In the seventh and eighth grade, your teachers do too, a little bit here and there. We do use Edge a climber for our PBIS. And it is very well utilized by teachers entering in majors and minors as far as behavioral incidences go. So that is well managed. So it's just a little different. So it's good. It's working.
So you don't have any problems in seventh and eighth grade anymore? That's amazing.
Well, we, we know, but as I said, it's not necessarily by location, it's by just a few.
Just teaching.
A few individuals. That was good.
Thank you. The next agenda item is child development days, Jan.
Well, when we, when we had our meeting last week, we would have only had one of the child development days completed. But now, it was timely. So we had both of them completed. They're on February twelfth and nineteenth. But approximately sixty students overall go through the two days, three sessions, both days. I just want to give some thank yous. Deb Hark and Julia Buckingham pretty much set up the whole thing and facilitate the parent informational meeting and then get people to go where they're going. We have community partners that come from and have booths in the library. And the, when you talk about people accessing resources, it's awesome if you can bring the resources to the people. So the fact that Julie Trigastad, my assistant, and then Devin, Julia, and the rest of the early childhood team coordinate all of those community partners, it's a really awesome outreach to our Brokewood community as a whole. Julie Trigg said she does all the behind the scenes work, getting everything ready, putting the packets together, doing the mailings home, taking the census data, making sure that we have all the people that should be on the list, on the list, and then doing double, triple, quadruple checks. For the Brokewood Elementary School and Brokewood Area Story School, early childhood teams, this goes for paraprofessionals, teachers, special education teachers. They lead students through a play-based experience. And there's watchers and there's evaluators. And it is quite the production, if you've ever been here, to be able to see all different development areas of a lot of little kids. So it does take quite the production. We have all the speech pathologists in there. Deb Beaver kind of holds down the health part of the office while we have our nurses doing the hearing screenings. DMH, one of the nurses that we contracted was supposed to do a presentation on the nineteenth, but the other nurse that was supposed to be there had, was sick, just like I think everybody else was at one point during the month of February. So they canceled her going so that she could do the hearing screenings. And I thought that that was a really good, I thought they served us really well in that capacity. They didn't have to, and they, and they did anyway. So I was really pleased with them being able to do that. The Lions Club does the vision screening as well. So it's just a, it's a big production that you couldn't do without everyone doing their part in it.
Is that number typical or?
Yes. So if you think about our classes that go through the schools, sixty would be like the next 4K class. Plus, we have an outreach for three-year-olds too. So it's not just eligible 4K. We also have like an outreach tying the last slot on the nineteenth is for three-year-olds.
When you send those up, do you believe you've got to get every one of the four-year-olds through the screening?
I think that would be impossible to get every single four-year-old. We do the best we can with the census information that we have. Census information is only as good as the information that's given. So we, we do the best that we can. We say, you have a four-year-old.
Beaver.
To our staff, are they on this list? Are they, you know, other four-year-olds because of play dates, are they on this list? And just making sure that we're getting everybody. And we did catch three or four people that, three or four children that weren't on the list by doing our double, triple, quadruple checks.
The teachers and staff are really diligent about following up with families and trying to make sure they get here and really keeping a schedule and making the opportunities available. Want everybody to come in that we can get contact with.
Thank you for everyone that makes that happen. I know it's witnessed with the high-energy crowd and children going in a lot of different directions, not sometimes wanting to go in the direction in which you're wanting to. So thank you for that. State testing update, we have Jan and Jason.
We have ACT with writing for grade eleven on March third, which is coming up next week. I'm not even gonna say anything about the weather.
We have ten more days of school this year than this time that we did last year.
Well, I just, I said I'm not saying anything about it. So we'll be, we'll be there.
You were supposed to be quiet too, anyway.
ACT with writing for grade eleven with students with accommodations is March third through the eleventh. So it's an extended testing window if you need to have extended time or any other accommodations. Forwarding ELA for math, with math grades three through eight, science for grades four and eight, and social studies for grades four, eight, and ten is March twenty-third through May first. The dynamic learning maps for ELA and math for grades three through eleven, science grades four, eight, and eleven, and social studies for eight and ten is March twenty-third through May first. The dynamic learning maps for the LM is the test that the students who are most cognitively disabled, so the students, only one percent of students statewide and district-wide can be identified as the student who's the most cognitively disabled. And that is the dynamic learning maps. And then ACT Aspire, which is now being included in our state report card for grades nine and ten, will be April sixth through May sixth. So if the chance of you getting computer lab in the Brokewood schools in April is low, just wanted to throw that out there. If you were planning on doing something, they are booked solid in basically the month of March and April.
Once again, thank you for that work. It's really too bad that we have to have all of those tests.
Our school counselors are amazing in coordinating everything. And there are site assessment coordinators. And it's General Bright, Jessica Carlson, Jenny Schneider. And it is, it is a lot of work. It is, it takes a lot of time. Administrators have to take, administrators have to take a, like a confidentiality test. And they, they have to make sure that all of that happens. And they, they do just an amazing job as site assessment coordinators.
And then students get sick, and then you have to have makeup tests.
Well, they'll all be helping.
The weather, no help.
The weather's, the weather's gonna be great, so.
But it does disrupt the entire school. And it, it's good to know that, remember that, because everybody does such an excellent job of being flexible and adjusting their schedule and making it work for kids. But it really disrupts what you would spend time teaching, given that time, so.
And it's critical time for teaching too. Students are very focused during this time of year. So thank you for that, Jan. Jason, did you want to speak to it as well?
No, I just wanted to agree with Mike on the weather. Not even a late start because the ACT is Thursday, so I think each test starts by nine AM, which is why we do all the preregistrations already done for next week's test. We do that ahead of time with the students. And we would like to say a positive note, our juniors do not have to take the work youth exam this year. That was a test that was taken away, which will usually be the day after the ACT, depending on weather. And that was another three-hour exam. And they started, the process of that last year, they started, they surveyed the high school principals in the state, and I think they surveyed the superintendents. I don't know what the superintendents' results were.
Not, not big fans.
The high school was like ninety-eight point five percent of high school principals recommended getting rid of the exam.
And one didn't understand.
I don't know if there's a standard of error of one and a half or what there is. But so I think at least that's a positive as far as the concern over testing too much. The ACT is the ACT, especially a lot because they're looking for post-secondary. But a great way for them, for parents to not have to pay for that personal round of the ACC. But yeah, we're just hoping for a good weather. We've had too many times over the last few years that we've had to talk them up and send them out because you can't just keep them until the next test. You have the ACT is very specific about their rules. And rightly so.
At least have to talk to the individual, turn your call to school.
I, the person to my right. And I don't want the job.
On any snow day or late start that's scheduled to be an ACT day, but your high school counselor is coming in because we probably have to have them in a FedEx package by the end of that day, going back out to getting ready for that next shift.
Thank you. The next item is sock hop, Tom.
The parent group is having the sock hop at the elementary school gym on Thursday, March fifth, from three to five. They're asked for about eight staff members to help out. We've already had a couple volunteers. So looking forward to that event. Be a new one for me, trying to figure out if I'm actually supposed to cover my socks in my fifties outfit or.
Oh, without question. Everyone's all in.
Video pictures.
They'll be in the broadcaster, Julie. Kindly attended.
All right.
Weather permitting.
Oh, yeah.
The next item is continuous improvement with Jason and Jan.
We've been attending our continuous improvement workshop. It's a four-part series. And we've done two of the parts. The first one was basically a data analysis for eight hours. And then we went back and they taught us how to do a root analysis to try to determine what's the data we have, what's the reason for that. And now we are in the phase, turn it up fast because Mike told me to. Now we're in the phase that we have to try to prove our root analysis. So we're gathering evidence, trying to determine if our hypothesis for lack of utter terms is correct or not. One of the ways where students do that is coming up on Thursday, the service day, we're actually doing some evidence gathering, middle school and high, middle school and elementary level on math scores and at curriculum and at high school level on English language charts, implementation of curriculum. So trying to just determine, you know, like we've said previously with the charts, it's, it's a data point. It tells you where you're at and gives you questions that you want to try to answer to make things better.
Keel mentioned someone's coming in.
Yeah, we have Jill from the State RTI Center is actually gonna come in and facilitate the process for us. We're gonna do the SER. And I usually have that acronym written now, but I don't have it in front of me. We have done the SER in the past at the elementary and a little bit at the middle school when it comes to reading. You either have to do it as a math focus or it's a reading focus. So on Thursday, the selected individuals, there won't be entire staffs. At the elementary and the school, we'll do the SER on math. At high school, we'll do the SER on reading.
School-wide implementation review.
School-wide. Thank you. Jan, did you have anything to add for that one?
I don't because we've been, Jason, Keel and I and Krista and Tom have been talking about this a lot. And Jason did a little, I don't want to say it though, because that's...
Perfect. Thank you. I just don't want to leave you out.
And we brought things back to the admin team and the DLT from the trainings to share with them and work through that process.
Sounds like the training has been very worthwhile. Thank you. The next item is this department report.
So on Thursday, I'm the student representative. And the recap for February ten to fourteen is our Kevin fever week. So we had the dress-up days. Monday was pajama day. Tuesday was a thin day. Wednesday was Wisconsin day. Thursday was a workout day. And we had Lady Kudus Zumba, the community come in. And then Friday was red and pink day for Valentine's Day. Kevin fever week is a way for students to get involved and have fun during the long winter months of being cooped up and everything. For student council, community service, we had elementary schoolers make Valentine's cards. And then we hand them out through nursing homes in the community. Fundraisers, Ethan Tubin, he did, he sold coronations for Valentine's Day and Mathematics, which is little like surveys that we fill out. And then staff appreciation, had sweet treats in the lounge for staff. And then school spirit did Kevin fever week, arranging the days and everything. Upcoming events for our community service is we're having the community blood drive in March. And then the junior classes sort of their prom planning. They have a poster hung up in the hallways for students to be aware. And then students are excited to have the three-day week with the shortage of sore days.
There he's gone.
It was last, last Thursday, we were looking at it going, last Thursday, a year ago, was the tenth day that we had had a complete day out for ice or cold, for pretty cold or for snow. And so we're doing much better this year.
Did you hear that, Joseph? You heard?
Well, it was really cold the week of Kevin fever. So it was very timely because it was freezing outside. But I know people went ice skating. And I was thinking, wow.
That was one of the activities that we had for that Friday. We had bowling at Nordic lanes, ice skating at the hockey arena, and then the resource in gym room open at the school. And then we had various movies of the fever too that we had on that Friday.
Thank you. It sounds like there's a lot of fun.
The hockey arena, then it wasn't outside. They had to heat the building.
But I thought, who I wouldn't want to go skating necessarily today. But it sounds like there's a lot of very fun things going on while learning. So thank you for that. When is prom?
It is April forty-fifth.
Oh, okay. My son's getting married that day. I would be formally attired. Thank you. The next item is district administrator referendum update, social media texting update.
So the referendum update, we're working with the company, FPH Design. They work locally with a lot of small districts and helping with referendum planning. And so we're just working with them to do the mailing to the community and the brochure. We have that some assistance with professionally developing pieces so people can see the information that we're presenting. We're happy with the progress we're making with them. Beth has already got Mike and I scheduled numerous community meetings throughout the district. And so we'll be starting to do those. As you can see from Mike's budget report too, the budget looks very favorable going forward to the timing for this operational referendum to continue. So the slight increase to the referendum, I think is, you can see, is not gonna have an impact on the community. So I think taking into consideration all of the feedback that we got from the community, focusing on the infrastructure and the buildings themselves and some of the projects that we need to do, like the windows project in the elementary school, you know, those kinds of things, focusing on those and keeping the impact smaller and then looking to the future, you know, we continue to be in a good situation financially with the debt coming off. And perhaps we'll go back to the community and start working, talking about planning for referendum a few years from now and how that might look. So it's just something that we feel is working well for, for the district right now in the community. So we'll be going around and sharing the information with everyone that will have us and come up with them. And then the social media and texting update, we, at the convention, all of us that were there, met one of the groups that was presenting at the convention, social hashtag, social media for EDU. And they do a very nice job of helping to support school districts, and only school districts, with their social media campaigns so that they organize Facebook and Instagram and Twitter and YouTube page. And they help set those things up and coordinate them. And they help organize posts so that they're effective and help manage that. So we have been talking with them since the convention and working with them to set that up. And we're getting started with them. We should start to see. And we're getting started with them and we should start to see that impact pretty quickly. Over the next couple of weeks, we'll be making moves there. And we hope to have our social media just be more effective. The students are more interested in what they see if it's through Instagram, but the community sees more information consistently through Facebook. They're very knowledgeable about the right ways to put information out so that people get it and people will see it. And that's what we want to be able to do. We also with our Veropa app made some updates. And I don't think Beth was working hard with AppG and coordinating and getting some of this information together, but we're able to send texts now for, especially for emergency situations, to all of our parent contacts in Skyward. So that's updated every evening. So if I send a text out to say that we're not going to have school because of bad weather, I can send it, now it doesn't go on a webpage and maybe to Facebook, but I actually can send a text to all of the families directly. And that's much more effective in getting information out to folks directly. So we hope too, in the, in the situation, we might have an emergency situation. If we had an issue, if we had a fire at school, we had a gas leak or something like that, if we thought we needed to evacuate the school. We want to get information out to parents and tell them, don't come to the school, come to this location to pick up your child, you know, things like that. A text would be much more effective at reaching parents directly and quickly. So we wanted to have that in place and believe that'll help us with our communication, especially in safety situations too.
Well, thank you for that because, you know, when something does happen, an emergency, and then you type in all the phone lines become too busy, it becomes too much for them to handle. So having them just say where students are going to be is wonderful, so thank you.
Keel, do we have two wrestlers called the State also?
We do.
That sounds like it'd be good to announce.
Joseph, you want?
I'm sure. It's Josh Frye and Kelly Anderson.
They both finished first at sectional. We had a couple other wrestlers who finished fourth. Erin, his mom's here and his sister is here.
It was Erin and then Paul Nicolati finished fourth as well.
So we don't know if they didn't get invited then because...
No.
Top three?
Top three.
You want to say something about...
This top three goal.
Top three.
I didn't know, sometimes in track and field, they take the fourth if there's a reason. But I didn't know if that was case in wrestling. So I got educated tonight.
Well, that's exciting.
Congratulations.
Are you having a pep assembly with Ison?
Yeah, they'll be...
Congratulations to Naomi and Coach Anderson.
And just to piggyback what Keel said about the referendum meetings, our first public referendum meeting after, you know, going into the election will be, I think I have this right, Beth, Wednesday, March 11th, 6:00 PM here in this library.
And then what, that Friday?
And then Friday, where?
Here.
Here also.
Friday morning.
Friday morning.
And will that be on the left side, I assume?
Yes.
And Angie's going to put it in the paper too.
Thank you. Thank you for that. The final item is the board report. So the WASD convention report, ACT update and WASD legislative update. So Mike is going to put this PowerPoint up and the different board members put some information from some of the meetings that they attended. And so they had an artist, which was kind of interesting. So an artist would take different topics that were being talked about in the different breakout sessions. And then these were posted all around and people were taking pictures of them and bringing them back. And it was just snippets of information. So do you want to go ahead, Vicki? Do you want to go through?
Sure. The first session that I went to discussed vaping and an approach to try to reduce vaping and get kids who are vaping into some ways to cease vaping. So I picked up stuff that I can leave with you, Keel, on the Catch My Breath program. So Abby and Lance presented from CSAT and Abby is a program manager with Catch My Breath. So it's a vaping education program. They have best practices for prevention, pure blood approach. They provide, it's all free, you can download all the materials thanks to some grants that they have. They group it into grades, five and six, seven and eight, and then nine through 12. So it's a series of four classes that can be presented. They suggest doing it in health, by ed, science, or through a guidance advising program. Or it could be a community program as well, if it's done in the classroom. And then they also have some scholarships available because there's a sort of a learning component. That's perfect. They have lots of materials. I chose to go to this one because I have kids in the middle and high school and vaping is always sort of a topic around the house lately, you know, how many kids are vaping. So I just, I chose to go to this one.
I went to this one as well and it was pretty remarkable actually because it is all free and all of the information that they have that they want to teach parents too because there's a misconception that if you vape that there is, it's safe. And so there's a training piece to try to teach parents actually the dangers of it because most of the students, most of the children actually get their vaping tools from their parents. Studies show, so it was, Vicki and I, it was very interesting. The general session, we all attended the general session. And it was about equity and effective instruction, school instructional leadership. Probably safe, very student-focused. It was good. Want to go to the next one, Mike? This was the speaker. You can go click on. I don't know if anybody wants to add anything, but these are the topics that he spoke about. If anybody wanted to Google him or listen to any YouTube from him, he spoke very well, very interesting. It was all about deeper learning, like giving, instead of having an assignment say, you know, read this or do this, it was more, this is what I want you to get out of this piece of learning. Now you figure out what you want to present on that topic. So instead of saying everybody's going to write an essay, they had people that were creating games and all, and spent way more time on something because it became more interesting to them. And then when people are presenting, instead of give a presentation on Abraham Lincoln, for example, give a presentation on anything during the time period. And it was very...
One of his topics too was, one of the kids had to create a simulation of a city and put it on a piece of paper. And he said that the kid that did this just really didn't want to do paper because no one really uses paper and does that anymore. And he created his town in Minecraft and then created a 20-minute YouTube video walking through his town that he created. And just how the teaching and using some of these programs that kids use every day to help them learn and push them into, to do things to become more engaged in what they're already using.
He also spoke about kids have so much information today and they have so many different interests. And you have to teach to the curriculum that you can do it in a million different ways and let the student actually have some say in how they're learning that piece of information. You'll be shocked at what they do and how much further they'll go in order to learn because if they're doing it the way that they find it interesting.
If I'm going, if I skip something...
No, I don't, I don't think so. Deep learning, I don't know if, if you have anything to add to it? I went to the business of education. Keel has been to it before, he did not think a lot of it. It's a business, it's an actual business that's selling how you should learn. The one thing that I, you can keep going through here, Mike. The one thing I did learn though is it's all about students. I mean, no matter how you, how you, how you slice it, it's trying to keep current on technology and, and being aware of the technology that's out there. Because our first graders right now, we don't know what the world is going to look like when they graduate from high school. So a teacher must stay current and we have to have our, engage our students and our students are our focus. So, and he said you have to unlearn things that you've learned. I understand the point of unlearning, but we never want someone to actually unlearn a piece of information. I mean, you are open to learning more about something, but I don't know that everybody wants to unlearn. Anyway, that was not my favorite.
But you, Keel was right.
You did, you did hit the most, yeah, the most important takeaway, that's for sure.
Right. It's about students and, and this is Oklahoma Lockery School District. They had a strategic plan. It was interesting too. You know, one reason that I wanted to put this together is so that administrators could look through it and, you know, see the kind of courses that we went. If there's anything of use to anyone or teachers, I certainly hope that they will use it. This was interesting. Marina and I both went to this and talked about what, you know, being a good board member and what that means. And I don't know that it was anything earth-shattering, but at the same time, it was something that we all have to stay focused because as a board member, we are not to get involved in the daily operations of the district, about not speaking to each other out of a meeting on any topic. And when it talked about the budget, for example, that was very interesting because they actually said you shouldn't read the financials. And I didn't know that Mike would appreciate that, but that their recommendation was you're supposed to have a holistic approach and looking at bills is actually not part of the job of the school board. But I don't know that, I think you look at them, we have to approve them. If you're approving something, it should be something that you see.
And I've worked with the school board that would pick little things out each, each time. And it's like, why, you know, and then somebody would have to explain what it was and it was perfectly legitimate. And this board doesn't do that. This board makes sure that...
At one point, it might have.
I don't mind asking a question if I have a question because some things I just never heard of them before.
I think it's important to be knowledgeable about what's going on and have that oversight. And so I think you have the right measure of interest in it.
I don't know how many of you went to this, but they have student projects from other districts. And one school district built a race car every year and that was pretty interesting. And then they have some robotics there and one, 3D printer. One thing I thought is, is our school district not here, we're doing some really cool things. I think that we could present some student-focused projects just as well as any of these others, but the car was pretty cool. Naomi, do you want to talk to that?
Sure, this was a fun, in the exhibit halls, the Flex Farm. So they have this growing system. And actually a graduate of Roqua, which is Garth Larson, wrote the curriculum to help, to go along with this. So there's a K through 12 curriculum. And in the school district that his kids are in, how many did they say they have? Minicani?
Right.
Nineteen of them. So they fully stocked their salad bar with greens. And so there's a lot of greens, but you can grow lots of things. Anything that's grown out of the ground, you can grow in these. And so it was really, really a fun thing to see and also having that tie to Roqua's there right across the hall there. So it was, it was very cool.
It has a light in the middle of it and then it waters itself and the curriculum looked fantastic. And, I mean, our area is very foodie. And so have kids actually growing their own vegetables, you could see how that might entice them actually to eat some different things too.
And they have these in the lunchrooms is where they're at. And so they close them at night with the lights on, but then during the day, they have it open. So kids are seeing the vegetables growing and watching them grow. They're little tiny pods and grows quick and lots of fresh.
And so we bought that back and said we wanted this school district to buy about 10 of them.
Yeah.
Man, is that one going in your kitchen?
No, we, I actually got information, like I'm...
I might buy one, actually.
So you can have just that base too. You don't have to have the top for home use. So Garth said they have one at home that just has the lower portion, so you can...
It's very inexpensive and...
It was.
Yeah, it was a really interesting idea for the district.
So I do think Montessori in the elementary and Trillium trouble in the branches.
Oh, really? Great.
A grant we have.
Oh, fantastic.
We have the wrapped coming to school.
Oh, great. Well, and the herbs and, I mean, there's just so many really nice things that you could grow. We were very fast and quick. And you didn't have to do anything to it. And it was safe.
Five minutes of maintenance a day. Rest of your teeth.
Sure. And then there were laborers union there and that was interesting because they talked about jobs and they had some really nice suppliers. And I thought this is something that could be utilized in our counselors offices because sixth grade on, you know, they're trying to focus on different occupations. And so there are occupations on this and they spent a lot of money on this information and was done very well. So I gave all of these things to Keel to distribute so that people can see what type of jobs there are out there and what type of pay those jobs have and benefits. David Hooks, I got this for Jana. I went to this. I'm sure it's nothing that she doesn't already know, but it was really interesting about dyslexia and legislation that's going on right now. I don't know if you...
I read through here.
Sure. Anything shocking or surprising?
That a dyslexia specialist would not be a teacher.
Right. That was...
Hopefully increased funding from the state for not hiring a teacher who's dyslexic.
And I think they said one in five, was it, students have some form of dyslexia? And I don't know where they're getting that information.
It was like, no, maybe one in five students has a reading disability.
Okay, maybe that's what it was. But it was, it was very interesting. I don't know where they're going to go. But there is some legislation out there that could put some mandates on every school district in this area. You can go to the next one, Mike. Beth and I went to strain Patson, Rennie, Lewis and Lacy. And that was interesting about social media. Oh, my goodness. Basically, what was said was as board members that we are not necessarily a board member ever, which we know that anyway. And then it talked about all of the laws and how the rulings have changed in the country and in the state as to rights of students and teachers and policy. And Beth and I shared that information. And our policies are very good, they're very current, so that was good to know. But it talked about teachers and perhaps they should not have friend students on their Facebook pages. It said you can't obviously restrict anyone, but that's not a very good idea. So it was interesting. But how quickly it's all changing. But once again, there were big packets of information and ideas after. Jobs of the future, once again, this goes a bunch of manufacturing jobs and management and education that you needed. And so that was something else that I shared with the district. This was American Indian Studies, this is a teacher. Oh, my gosh, did I learn a lot. Oh, my gosh, did I learn a lot about how our society has perhaps not taught history in the manner in which we should have during my generation. And I know that's changing now. But there's all kinds of free resources out there. And they gave us some things that, once again, I did give to Keel that can be shared with elementary or middle school or high school. But they have a whole free curriculum and all kinds of resources that they give to school districts. You can go on to the next one, Mike. And this is what Keel was talking about as far as the sending out tweets and information to our district. So probably looking into that. Board meetings, once again, this is the same type of thing. But I always want to make sure that we're doing everything that we can that's appropriate as a board. Talked about big pictures, setting goals, making sure we're, having a goal. I actually shared with them about our calendar that we use. And they thought that was a really good idea. Most districts don't have that. And that's been a very helpful tool for setting meetings. And back in field, done a wonderful job of putting our calendar together with and put from the board. And I, our board is very good about communicating with one another in a respectful manner with some things that go on in other districts that aren't just kind. But talked about discussion and having discussion. Our board is very open to all of that. Talked about not having meetings too long, which this could be one of our longer meetings. Going.
Keep going.
Talking about asking questions in a respectful manner and asking people what you think. There's a podcast that you can go to to the convention that I.
I said, you want me to? Go to the podcast.
Keep going, I think that's about the end.
It is a monthly podcast, so not just a regular convention, but we'll have something monthly.
Yes, and Vicki, Vicki shared it. Right, Vicki shared it with me, it was really good. So when you get it, Vicki, if you want to forward it to Beth, and I know it's there, but.
Or, or on Spotify.
Yeah.
Which is how I listen to it.
Oh, did you? Yeah, I listened to it when I was.
What, what is it? I mean, what, what would you look through?
WASB.
WASB.
Yes, it's on WASB. It was really well done.
I'll send you that.
I did get it from Garth too, who was, was a class named I, but a Veropa graduate. He, they have, he has a new book, PLC two point oh, which he gave to me at the conference. So I did share that I gave it to Krista. So they have it for a resource in the elementary school. And it was fun to get that to me.
So before we get to two hours and fifteen minutes, can I make the motion to adjourn?
Well, wait, is there anything legislatively? I, I actually, I just went to Washington DC. So that's something else that's on here, the ACCT. And that was for higher education. And that was about extending Pell Grants from twelve to fourteen months. And they also talked about college courses in high school and what, what we might be able to do legislatively to promote more of that on a federal scale. And they talked about student loans and how student loans have been increased and a women wage if you have a part time job in college, you can't pay to do your education like you used to be able to. And so trying to do some things in that capacity. As well as the Higher Education Act has been on court for seven years. And they still have not agreed upon the Higher Education Act. So we're working with Allen. And anytime you want to bring that topic up legislatively, you should because they need to complete that process. But that was very interesting. We spoke to all the legislators and about brands. There aren't many brands making all of that in the way of pay. And that's that, now we've. Is there a second? No second, everyone else. Thank you. And thank you all, thank you for coming, thank you for spending your time. Thanks for, because I'll be, I'll be late.